Come forward and recite the pledge, but let me just read this bit for you. They've been married for forty-nine years, congratulations, and have lived in Lewiston since nineteen eighty-one. Both retired from Saint Joe's, Phil is a pharmacist and Marilyn is a medical librarian. In their retirement, they enjoy the pickleball, that's Phil, and yoga, Marilyn, and as well as numerous other hobbies and volunteer callings, including at their church and with Lewiston's Adopt a Street program, where they've been volunteering since it was initiated by the city of Lewiston. So that's quite an accomplishment, really, and exciting, and one that I participate in. They have two grown daughters, each married, who reside in Washington and have followed their parents' footsteps. One is a pharmacist and the other is an educator. They also have a six-year-old grandson, Nicholas. So, Phil and Marilyn, if you please. Over to here, I guess Carol's gonna help you, and the rest of you, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with us.
All right. Oops, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here and making this special for us. Phil and Marilyn, thank you. Before we move on to citizen comments, I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. The first is that our city clerk, Carrie Ravencroft, is participating remotely, and she will be taking minutes for tonight's meeting. Also, Councilor Forsman is with us, remote, and she will participate and vote remotely. And then also, if we have any roll call votes tonight, our deputy city attorney, Brian Drury, is gonna be calling the roll call here from the front. So with that, we'll move on to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor, in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. I would also tell you that the Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. And if you are going to offer comments tonight, just a reminder that if they're related to the public hearing, they must wait until the public hearing is open. So with that, if there are any citizen comments, please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Dustin, okay. My name is Malik Pryor, and I just wanted to come and share my concerns about the public transit here and how, as you see here what I'm about to give away, is I have this petition here with all the people that are all for public transportation and getting it to run. How, you know, I've been saying that, you know, it needs to run because so many people around the SLS Valley have had issues getting around. So, and I got thousands of people on board, so that's it for tonight.
No, please just leave them at the front or give them over here, and then we'll hand them out later. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Malik.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malik. Are there further citizen comments tonight? Johanna, welcome.
I'm Johanna, Lewiston, Idaho. I just wanna know, also, I was shut off at, when they have the daycare thing, and I was gonna talk about transportation, and it was very, very expensive for the parents to get the children to daycare. And I was going to say, they wouldn't let me to say, you know, the families need to be together so they can carpool. Now, I'm, when you guys have a city council or planning zoning, you know, when somebody says, like, the gun place, that now they're only open three days, praise the Lord, that the insurance was gonna go up three times, you guys bought it. You didn't, you did not check to see if they were true sayings. And then the lady at The Rock, that restaurant, said, you know, that the homeless warming center was hurting her business. She was out in three months, but nobody checked last year's, you know, or the following year? You just buy everything. Now, I had a telephone conversation with Little, you know, how you get a call in. Well, I was the first call to ask a question, and I didn't think I was doing it, so I was washing dishes and, oh, you know. So anyway, and I asked him, do you know why we're having the homeless problem? And he didn't really answer, so I went on and on. And anyway, I found out one more thing. If you lose your keys and you have a peel box, guess what? You needed an ID. So immediately, he got his crew down, you know, very uppity, uppity people, and they had a meeting at Joanne McFarland's. I didn't know they had the meeting. The next day, I came down with more information. Joanne McFarland says, oh, I wish you were there, you know, you could tell. So they picked Joanne McFarland. Now, when we had the warming center to come here, guess who didn't listen to Joanne McFarland, who Little picked to solve the warming problem thing. So I'm working on, I'm getting a hundred pins made that says, liar, liar, pants on fire. And they know I'm already hurting their business. And so just think, you know, when there's a lawyer who's for something, how much education does she have or he have? So, you know, and me, I want to find out what's going on with the lawyers. When I went down to talk to somebody that was involved with Adult Resource Center, they says it's out of our control, it's the lawyers. So I think the people need to know what's going on, because this grants people can be getting. We have a group that are planning something, but, you know, grants, you know, you only have so much time. As you know, we almost had to lose a grant for the P factory that was snuck in after the mayor voted.
Thank you, Johanna. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna.
Further citizen comments? Ken, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. Speak loudly and clearly.
Ken Kron, Lewiston. On February thirteenth, you guys had a city council meeting. It wasn't in the paper. And then we had to read about it two days later, or a day later, about providing funds for a roundabout that I had, people didn't have any clue about, three hundred fifty thousand, and a thirty-six thousand slush fund money for the promotion of the community park. And then I read on big country news that the roundabout's going in starting tomorrow, when we could have put in another stop sign and posted a cop there once in a while. I, I don't know what the roundabout is for. The one that's put at the end of Thane is useless. Only time that's used on Sundays, when they have church out there. So my concern is, and I told you this last time, the problem with Burrell and Tenth is, we don't have five lanes on Brydon Avenue. That's our problem. And I don't know how we push a roundabout to the top of our list when we can't even fix a street. What about a sidewalk? What about a sidewalk from Winco up the Hill Seventeenth of those apartments? We can't even do that. How about finishing a project once? It'd be, I mean, you guys have ten million dollars indebtedness in fixing things in the, in the city of Lewiston, if I read that correctly, starting right here with another million dollars put in in the library. And I don't know how much at Fenton Gym, but why don't we fit, finish something and fix something instead of starting new? I don't know why we need a roundabout at Tenth and Burrell. And I'm sure you're gonna hear about it. When we should be finishing Brydon Avenue all the way, takes care of the problem, because you're gonna move the bottleneck down to Seventh Street. That's all that's gonna do. We're gonna have a bottleneck from Seventh both ways. So please, let's start using some common sense. It's our money, the people's money. And like I said, the taxes in Nesspurce County are one point four six, five percent. The state's average is point six five. How's your property taxes? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Further citizen comments? Okay, I will close citizen comments. Thank you for being here tonight. Next up, item four, public hearings and related action items. Item A, public hearing, VA dash zero four dash twenty twenty-two, vacation of public right-of-way petitioner, Dick Goodson, accepting testimony on a request to vacate the public right-of-way from an alley located north of East Main Street and east of Thirty Fifth Street, with the condition that a public utility easement be reserved within the vacated right-of-way area. Counselors, this is an action item. We have Director Johnson here from the Public Works Department today. How this will work is I will open the public hearing. We will have a staff presentation from Director Johnson, the applicant's testimony or presentation, testimony from the public, if there is any, counselors. You may ask questions of the staff, applicant, persons providing testimony. Once we close the hearing, then we'll receive no additional testimony. So this is your time to ask questions. There'll be an applicant's rebuttal, if there is any, and then we will close the public hearing. So with that, I will declare the public hearing open. And Director Johnson, turn the floor over to you. Please introduce yourself for the record, and remember to speak loudly and clearly for those speaking, listening at home. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here tonight to talk to you about a vacation of public right-of-way. I don't know that we've done a public or a vacation of public right-of-way with this particular council, so I will kinda go through kind of the process, just so you guys are aware and where we're at and what we're doing. And the mayor kind of already outlined the process, but this is a public hearing. So in front of you tonight, the city received a petition from the neighboring property owner to vacate this right-of-way. I've pulled up the map up here, so this is, this is an alleyway, which it is, it's dedicated public right-of-way, but it is not named. It was dedicated in nineteen oh six. I don't know the details as to why it was dedicated at the time or what purpose it served in the past, but I can tell you, as of today, it doesn't really serve much purpose except for the neighboring property owners and a gas line from Avista. So, city receives a petition to vacate. We then publicly advertise it, or we advertise it to the neighboring property owners within three hundred and thirty feet, and we send out a notification to all parties who may have a, have a responsibility of maintaining infrastructure within that right-of-way. So that's obviously the city, private utilities, solid waste, fire department, sewer districts, water districts, if they're in, if they have infrastructure in this area. In this particular one, this is served only by city water, city sewer, airport, which is outside of that district, stormwater, the MPO, city attorney. So we go through the list and get basically laundry list of anything that could be impacted. The, like I said, the only one that was potentially impacted was Avista has a gas main or gas service line that runs down this right-of-way. The only thing that needs to change, if this was to be vacated, was to have an easement on top of that. And that was, that was expressed in the motion that the mayor read through. So essentially, we have no issues with this vacation as, as presented to you tonight and would recommend approval. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Is the applicant here tonight, Mr. Goodson? Don't see him. Anyone from the public that would like to provide testimony? Counselor Cleberg?
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Counselor Spicklemeyer, pardon me.
Thank you. So Director, just curiosity, when they do vacate like that, does the ownership of the land transfer?
Typically, it's split on a street. It would be split down the center line. So north goes to the neighboring property owner on, on the north side, south half would go to the south. And I'm not sure, as far as ownership on this, it just splits down the middle. These may be owned by the same property owner, so in that case, it would go all the way to that property owner.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see any further questions or comments. The applicant's not here to rebut, so I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Director Johnson. Counselor Cleberg? Or Counselor, Counselor Schroder?
Oh, we haven't, don't have it?
Okay, next up, counselors, we have item B.
Mayor, did you request citizen, or comments from the public? If you did, I missed it. I apologize.
I did, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Next up, we have item B, resolution twenty, and thank you for asking, resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, considering vacating the public right-of-way in VA dash zero four dash two zero two-two and reserving an easement. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder?
Thank you. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash four. Would you like me to read it?
Second, it's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Cleberg, to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash four. Is there further discussion?
Just wanna make sure.
Counselor Littke?
Sorry, thank you. Mayor, just wanna make sure that, clear that the resolution does include the addition of the easement for this, correct?
Yes.
Uh, Bree, if you'd call the roll, please.
Counselor President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. We move on to Roman numeral five, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselors? Counselor Littke?
I'd like to pull vouchers payable.
Second. Counselor Cleberg?
Just a correction. Having gone through the audit committee presentation with Counselor Spicklemeyer, I'm pretty sure I wasn't at the February twenty-seventh meeting. I was at the.
Would you like, would you like to pull those? We're not gonna discuss them here, counselor.
I just wanted to make a note that I was not in attendance.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
Counselor President Littke?
Oh. I need a motion. It's okay. You are great. You're gonna keep us all young, so don't stop, please. Counselor Littke?
I would move to approve the consent agenda with the items identified removed.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Towesley, to approve the consent agenda, less vouchers payable. Is there further discussion? Bree? Oh, Counselor.
Can you hear me very well?
I can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
I had one. I'm actually, no, I'm, no, I'm okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Bree?
Counselor President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next, we'll move to Roman numeral six, the active agenda. Up is item eight, WW zero zero one dash two zero two-two, wastewater improvement project basin four C, seven C, and two B change order, number seven, considering approval of change order number seven for WW zero zero one, twenty twenty-two, wastewater improvement project basement, basin four C, seven C, and two B with Titan Technologies in the amount of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. This is an action item, and we have with us here Director Johnson. Director, please, if you'd introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here to talk to you about change order number seven. So you are familiar with the work that's been going just east of Twenty-first Street. The bulk of this work has been under, underground, trenchless sewer rehab project. They've been moving, there's been some challenges, which I guess is kind of identified within some of the change orders that have been previously approved. What I'm here to talk about tonight is a change order of opportunity. So essentially, I think a couple of weeks ago, we approved a water project with the water improvements on Main Street. One of those sections was what is still Main Street, but goes behind locomotive park. So that water main is set to be replaced, and in evaluating that sewer line, that needs to be rehabbed as well. So we looked at it from the sewer perspective and saying it makes sense to rehab that work now, rather than have the pavement ripped out with the water and then do this at a later date. So communicated with the contractor that was already on site. They said they would be able to do it, and that's the price. Beyond that, there's money available within the wastewater funds to do the job. It seemed like a good project to kind of dovetail in with the, with the water project that's pending this summer. The only other thing I would add is there is a tail, as you come in, you know, so Main Street kind of keeps going east and Highway twelve kind of pulls up to the intersection with Twenty-first Street. That manhole in, in twelve is part of the end of this project. So the work will be done in, at nighttime to lessen the impact to the public, but that's the only section that real, I mean, there's not a lot of traffic that goes back on that section of Main Street. But just to let you know that we're, we're working with a contractor and ITD to try and minimize the impact to the public as we do this, this project. So other than that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Mayor, so Director, if I, if I heard you right, then so with us doing this one now, it will reduce the cost of the future?
Yeah.
What you have in the works?
It would prevent us to come back at a later date to do this project, because the water line will tear up that entire street. This won't require, there will be some asphalt to be removed, and it will muck it up pretty bad, especially on the end on ITD, but we will come back and repave the whole thing with the water, water line. So it just made more sense to get in there, do the, will be good for sewer for decades, and then when we'll have the water. So both water and sewer underground will be good for, for many years, instead of having to come back and rehab this sewer segment at a later date.
Counselor Littke?
Director Johnson, um, I don't even, this is the third changeover, change order, excuse me, changeover, change order, correct?
This is seven.
Seven.
Oh.
I got it. Are we expecting any more, since we approved this almost a year ago?
Yeah, I mean, change orders one, two, and three were scheduled, which did not impact the price. And then, as you can see, there was, what was interesting about this project was the change of conditions that were under the ground. So they essentially expected to be able to do trenchless work, but literally finding house foundations in, in the area of impact means we had to do a change order. So I don't expect future change orders, but I guess that's the nature of change orders. This one was, we requested it. The first three was a contractual agreement to get the schedule going. Those middle ones were, were hiccups. We ran in to the main project. So as, as we're closing it out, I would assume there would be no significant changes, but, but this one was, we asked for it because of the timeliness with the water project.
Hello?
Counselor Littke?
Thank you. And so, two-part question. Do we have a start date? And then also, if we're adding this to a project already, I was looking at that they had changed the prices of construction traffic control and actually decreased it, which I appreciate, but would, why would we need more traffic control if we're adding to an existing project that's gonna be going down that path?
So one, as far as the schedule, we don't have it firmed up. We'll, that's dictated by, well, we're coordinating with ITD on that one. The traffic control is because this, this one is on Highway twelve, or at least a portion of it is on Highway twelve, which will require more traffic control than what, what it was, what we've required previously on our local streets. And that's why it'll be at, at night, too.
Counselor Cleberg?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I support the, the change order. We've already got the, the equipment on the ground. There's no mobilization added in. And again, that we don't have to come back and re-mob and go dig up some stuff that may as well just be done at the same time we're doing everything else. Thank you for looking forward.
Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve change order number seven for WW zero zero one, twenty twenty-two, WW Improvement Project Basin four C, seven C, and two B between the city of Lewiston and Titan Technologies, Inc.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Cleberg, to approve change order number seven for WW zero zero one, twenty twenty-two, wastewater improvement project basin four C, seven C, and two B between the city of Lewiston and Titan Technologies Incorporated. Is there further discussion? Bree?
Counselor President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Nay.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, item B, K and twenty-three, one one nine, lower Lewiston port of entry water line agreement, considering approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Idaho Transportation Department, the city of Lewiston, to construct a city water main towards the ITD waste station on Highway twelve. Again, this is an action item. Director Johnson, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here to talk to you about a MOU, memorandum of understanding between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Department of Transportation. This one has a bit of a long, interesting, well, if you're an engineer, interesting history in that ITD approached the city, I would say probably two years ago, maybe even three years ago. If your, your port of entry building, as you're coming on Highway twelve ninety-five into town, there's that little port of entry building that's kind of in the middle of the highway there. They are serviced currently by the Red, Red Rock Water District, Red Water, Red Rock Water District, which they don't feel that it is providing adequate water. So they did an engineering analysis with a local engineer who looked at drilling a well, working, you know, rehabbing the, the water that they have. And one of the scenarios they looked at was piping in city of Lewiston water all the way out there. So they, they ran the cost analysis and went back to Boise and came back. And that's when they met with, with me and the staff, and we, we told them we would be open to the idea of having them tie into our water system, just it would, like any other developer, it would be on their dime. So they went back and they secured the funds, and they've come back to us with a completed design. What's unique about this is ITD was, was pretty, pretty upfront with us, saying ITD specializes in building highways and bridges and things like that. And they said if the city was more, if the city was willing to facilitate this contract, it would be of the benefit to both ITD and the city, because the city, we do water lines, we do construction within the right-of-way for, for this type of use. And so we, we worked with purchasing, we worked with our own staff, and reluctantly agreed, just because of our own workflows right now. But the bulk of this is administered by a own workflows right now. But the bulk of this is administered by a separate engineering firm, so inspection services, design. Essentially, the only thing that we would be doing is obviously we would have some oversight over it, which there's a, I think there's twenty thousand dollars reserved for the cost to the city for the administration of it. And then we would be the party that facilitates the bidding, so opening, advertising, opening bids, and awarding bids. But everything else would be covered by ITD, and that's outlined within the MOU in front of you. You know, I think generally the concept of getting new water main to serve more customers within the city of Lewiston is a benefit to us, and we're supportive of it. So if you have any questions, I stand for questions.
Director, I'm just going to ask a quick one. When you said reimbursement for administration costs, is that just administrative expenses, or is that contract administration?
There's two separate line items. There's administrative costs, which are, I think it's stipulated at twenty thousand dollars for our costs, and then there's an additional ninety thousand for consultant costs.
Thank you. Councilors? Counselor Lidkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Johnson, so the map's a little hard for me to figure out where city limits is. Is this, is the whole line within city limits?
No. I'm glad you brought that up. As I was closing, I realized I did not identify. We have been working with the county, so Hatway Way Road, so it starts in the city, leaves the city, and so it will be going down Hatway Road to a certain distance and then crossing into ITD right of way. But this will be service, servicing properties outside of the city limits. So they will have an agreement similar to other customers that we have that are outside the city limits.
Counselor Lidkey.
Okay, so one of the concerns I had was that we are going to get reimbursed, which is great, but it's our water. So they're paying for it, and then they never, the construction, and then do they, what's the charge to water to ITD moving forward? And then also, I'm a little nervous to sign off on something when there's another party involved that I feel like we need to put from the county on how this is all going to work together and really benefit us, I guess.
So that part, I know is being negotiated between ITD and the county, and I believe, you know, as far as the alignment of where it goes, and I believe ITD, essentially, the county, which, not disagreeing with them, asked for the, or the water line to be, because of utility conflicts, asked for the water line to be in the road, which then precipitated them asking, well, if you're going to rip up the road, please pave it back and make it at least as good as it is now, which precipitated more funding coming from ITD. And that's a conversation that the city isn't necessarily involved, that we, you know, that's a county road, that's an ITD project. We're happy to, we're working with both of them, but that's what's going on there. For an ITD customer being outside the city limits, typically, we charge one and a half times for customers that are outside the city limits for city services, typically water and sewer. So they would have a similar, and anybody who, you know, this is a long run of pipes, so anybody who may be on Hatway Road or somewhere else along the line may tap it, if they're contiguous, they may annex, or if they're not contiguous, they can use, tap that water line and be charged similar to some of the other customers we have out there that tie in and irrevocable consent to annex when they are contiguous or at that time.
Counselor Spicklemeyer? Counselor Kleberg, please.
Thank you. So yes, anybody outside the city limits pays a premium for the use of our water. There's another line that runs out there. Do you know, I'm just curious, because I remember when the Clearwater River Casino elected to tie into our wastewater treatment plant. So is that going to follow along the same ditch, you think, or is that in a different spot? There's like a lift station out there or something?
Yeah, it will be in that vicinity. I'm not quite sure proximity. I mean, because it'll run Hatway for quite a while until they can get it down into the ITD right of way. And I'm not sure exactly where that, that's a force main coming from the casino that direction, and I'm not quite sure where those two alignments will, they will eventually line up. They'll be in that same proximity.
Yeah, and they're currently using it, too, right?
That I don't, no, I don't know for sure.
Okay, I was curious about that. But no, as far as I'm concerned, and just like you mentioned, you know, if you're going to extend it out of the city limits, anybody that's in a close proximity there that is part of the Red Rock District, they will annex into the city if they choose to use our water. You know, if they're down the road, can't really do a shoestring annexation. So no, I look at this as kind of a win for the city, and I'm not worried about the county as far as they're having to maintain the road and stuff like that. That's kind of on them, between them and ITD.
In our conversations with the county road superintendent, they get a new road out of it. So, yeah, they were, they were, they asked for the pavement, and it sounded like ITD was agreeable, because ITD, they obviously maintain a lot of asphalt and would have asked for the same thing.
Sure. Thank you.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. So Director, any future usage of that water line would have to be with the approval of the city?
Yep, yeah. You would have to apply to tap that line, and typically, we would have some form of agreement since they're, if there may, I'm not quite sure exactly if there's, there could be more services where it's still in the city limits, but the majority would probably be outside of the city limits, and so they would have an agreement that they would sign.
Counselor Lidkey.
Just a couple more. So can we talk about, I know the Red Rock's water pressure was discussed, but will this affect ours? We have some situations with our water right now within the city. And then has the fire department addressed this and feel like we can move forward?
I'm not quite sure where the, but I guess I'll go back to the first question. So this area, North Lewiston, has its own reservoir up there. Pressures on this general area are not a concern that I'm aware of. You know, any water main that is approved through the city goes through the fire marshal. I have not, I will say I don't know, because I have not received comments from the fire marshal, but those would go directly to the design engineer. So I'm going to say I don't know, but I'm assuming that they're okay, because I would have known about it if there was a concern about fire suppression coming off this main.
Counselor Schroeder.
Motion in order.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department to extend the existing water main line toward the port of entry.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Towesley, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department to extend the existing water main line toward the port of entry. Is there further discussion? Counselor Lidkey.
I'm just having a hard time signing on without a little more information, and I get that long-term that is something we want to do. I just feel like there's some questions that need to be answered before I sign off. Not that I wouldn't support it if those answers came later, but I'm going to have to not support it this evening.
Councilors, further discussions or?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Towesley.
Yeah, I just, I think one of the things that would entice people to want to become part of our city is the idea that they're going to be getting water that is at a good pressure, that it's of a good quality, and that they don't have to worry about digging wells or any of the other things. And if twenty thousand is what we can do to get that line put in, and ITD's going to cover it all, and they're going to make the road nicer, or at least as nice, I think it's a win for us. So I'm certainly going to support this tonight.
Okay, councilors, if there's no further discussion. Bree.
Counselor President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Nay.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Director. Next up on the active agenda is item C, RFP dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-five Golf Course Management, considering approving the contract between the city and Lewiston Golf LLC. This is an action item, and we have with us tonight Director Tim Barker from the Parks and Recs Department. Director, please, as a reminder, speak up loudly and clearly, we have our city clerk at home taking notes, and Counselor Forsman and the public. With that, please introduce yourself. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director for the city of Lewiston. I'm happy to be here to share with you a proposed agreement to be in place with Lewiston Golf LLC, which is Courseco. You'll see throughout that it is referenced as their local company being Lewiston Golf LLC. As you remember, back in September, Jeff Bryony had provided us his thirty-day notice, so we put in a temporary agreement in place, found Courseco at the time, to come in and do that temporary agreement, as we put an RFP together that went out and was open basically November through mid-December. We received a couple proposals in. We had a citizen committee made up of Parks and Rec Commission members, community members from the public, and then city staff. And after review of the proposals received, the recommendation moving forward was to negotiate a contract with Lewiston Golf LLC, also known as Courseco. And so the last couple months, we've been negotiating that longer-term contract. So that has been in place. That negotiation's completed a couple weeks ago. There are some items that I wanted to make note for you today, and then I wanted to give Michael Sharp an opportunity to come up and speak on behalf of Courseco, who is, he is their CEO and here to answer any additional questions that you might have. In your packet that you had received with the advice letter from Kayla Herman, our city attorney, there were a couple items that were negotiated changes from that that are listed in your agenda item history sheet, but I just wanted to make note of those tonight, just so you were aware. The first item was related to the CPI adjustment. The city had proposed a two and a half percent or lower, and we came to an agreement to remove that two and a half percent, but we went with a CPI that was U.S. city average, all items less food and energy, which is the most flexible item, two items that come with the CPI. And so we came to that agreement, so that two and a half percent is no longer written within there. The other amendment is very minor that was included in your initial information that was provided by the attorney, and that was just an additional exhibit related to the eighteen-hole golf cart price was not originally included when that proposal came in. As you remember, last fall, when we were updating and setting all of those fees, because the former contractor at the site created their own fees, when we went to a management contract and the city was in charge of creating those fees, we had left that one item out, so that is added within your packet. So as far as the budget impact, we, basically going along with what's been currently in place, through this temporary agreement, there's a seven thousand dollar a month fee that's paid, and then also twelve hundred dollars a month for accounting that will come out of the course operating account. So unless there's no funds in that operating account, what'll be received on the end with what Amy and I both review within the finance department is it'll be noted as an expense within their monthly billing, or their monthly statements that they do provide us. Again, if there, for some reason, if there wasn't funds in there in place, then that would be something that the city would need to cover. I'll go ahead and invite Michael up to make some comments on behalf of Courseco, and then both he and I will be available to answer any questions.
You gonna stand here?
Yeah.
Like that better?
I like to hide behind the podium.
Michael, welcome. And then for the record, please introduce yourself. And we have folks listening at home, and we have microphones scattered around. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mayor, thank you. So Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Michael Sharp, President and CEO of Courseco. For those that do not read the proposal or know who Courseco is, I'm just going to indulge me for thirty seconds, give a little brief history on Courseco. Courseco, our sole business is golf management. Public municipal golf courses are specialty. We have forty-three properties. We are based on the West Coast locally. We manage and operate Palouse Ridge for Washington State University, the Tri-Cities, all three courses down in Kennewak, Pasco, Richland, and then we had a Marriott of courses across the West Coast, Twenty-Six in California, where I am based, our headquarters in Petaluma, California. You know, we came in on an emergency basis about five months ago. The city reached out, and they were looking for some help. We stepped in on an emergency basis and said, hey, you know, we're local, we know the market, we'll come in, we'll help stabilize, and we'll try to keep things operating smoothly until a decision can be made on what direction the city wants to go with the golf course. Through an RFP process, we were very fortunate to be selected, negotiated contract, and we are extremely excited for the next chapter of Bridging Canyon and to be your partner and manage the golf course moving forward. Our philosophy is pretty simple. This is what we do, municipal golf. We're really good at it. It's, we have four core values that drive every decision, and this is why I think our recipe works. Number one is financial performance. We understand that we got to drive the bottom line. That's what we're hired to do. Number two, environmental stewardship and management. There's no more decorated firm in the country, regardless of size, than Courseco, with our environmental stewardship and management of our properties. Number three is probably the secret sauce, is community engagement. We understand that these are community assets. Typically, the golf course in a community is the largest piece of recreational asset within a community. And the question that a lot of people ask is, well, gosh, only ten percent play golf. What about the other ninety percent? And so we really focus hard on that ninety percent with our programming. How do we get people out there to use the facilities, to make memories, come out and eat, come out and, you know, celebrate with us, learn the game of golf, or maybe just come out and use the facility for events, weddings, and so forth. And so, and then the fourth one is stakeholder communications, our fourth core value, kind of what we're doing tonight. We think it's really important that we share what's going on at the golf course, whether it's good, it's bad. We're your partner. Our job is to manage the facility and to communicate and keep everybody in the know, solve problems together. And we found that that recipe really works well. It's probably why in our thirty-three history, we've never had a municipal contract canceled or failed to renew, and that's a pretty impressive record, in my opinion, and I think that's a testament of the work that we do. So in particular, at Bridging Canyon, as we move forward, April first will be the start date of this new contract. We're already working. We already have our team, our local team, our regional team, and our world headquarters team, already working with the onsite staff, the stabilized staff, put the right structure in place, and we're already working with city staff on what that vision, what that future looks like. You've already, during this emergency period, there's already been a lot of changes. There's been upgrades to food and beverage, new televisions in the restaurant, some safety concerns that have been addressed since we took over that the city has stepped up and taken care of. So as we move forward, starting next week, our CEO, Tom Bugby, will be in town, be working with the team to finalize the marketing plan, finalize the operation plan. We'll be putting our calendar together for community engagement. One of those things will be another town hall. For those that attended, I think a couple people from did attend, we hosted a town hall early when we first came in, just to kind of tell who we are and sort of reduce the stress and anxiety of the golfers and the public and the employees, to let them know that we're here, and the golf course is going to remain. The city's committed to it. We're committed to it. We will have another town hall in late April, when we'll bring everybody back out to kind of share what our vision is moving forward and some of the immediate things that we're going to be doing, and we're excited about that. With that said, me, Courseco, we couldn't be more excited about this new partnership that we have, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those to the best of my ability. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Councilors? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor.
I actually had a question for Director.
I actually had a question for the Director. So for the golf course last year, what was the gross income for the golf course?
That's a very good question. So we have been on a month-to-month agreement with the previous operator. And we did not receive solid feedback as far as what their reporting was. This is, the city's gonna be a lot more hands-on with the management contract, where previously it was a lease agreement. And so the city didn't necessarily see the financials previously. And that was part of our issue when we put out the RFP, was getting companies interested in something that we couldn't guarantee what those financials were. So we had some solid financials from about two thousand seventeen, eighteen timeframe, but really not much since then. Obviously, over the last five months in the winter, we don't have a strong understanding of what the financials are gonna be. But we're gonna be working very closely over the next six months as things become ramping up at the golf course over the next six months and the busy season for us. So I can't give you a clear idea of what those revenues were. I can tell you, over the last ten-year period, you know, depending on the year, we've, I've, the reporting that I've seen ranged anywhere from about six hundred and fifty thousand to maybe about eight hundred thousand in revenues that came off of the course. But again, that's something that we've worked very closely with CourseCo on, is really analyzing this next six months to try to figure out a much better, we've been kind of doing a fictitious, you know, trying to come up with a good idea of what to propose for the budget, which you'll see come budget season this May and June. You'll, as part of the department budget, you'll receive an actual budget for golf now, which previously you really saw just kind of a general oversight related to what our annual lease rate was. So it's gonna be much more in-depth now. So we're kind of shooting in the dark at this point. But obviously, gonna continue, and we'll share that information as we know more.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I appreciate the presentation on behalf of CourseCo. But that was always one of the problems. And, you know, having been a member of the Audit Committee, I know I brought that up several times, and then President Gage took kind of a deep dive into it. And you're right, there wasn't a whole lot of solid data there. But I think staying in the golf game, having a solid, well, apparently, because I'm totally familiar with them, but they do sound like they have a pretty solid bona fides, that we'll get some good solid reporting on what the course can provide, you know, what the true cost of operating it is, and things like that. So I appreciate your work on this.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. So I tried to read through that. There's a lot of legal jargon in it. It seemed like there's a lot of stuff in the contract that basically was formed around CourseCo getting their money and where we're gonna put it and everything. But I didn't see a lot of expectations from the city to CourseCo. Were there any in there of performance expectations or anything like that?
That's a very good question. So with the RFP, a lot of those things were identified within the RFP. And so the RFP essentially becomes part of this agreement. And there were also promises made by CourseCo when they submitted their proposal as far as what they'll provide to the community and what level of expectation they will hold themselves to. So those were pieces of both their submittal and what our original requests were. But it's not necessarily identified within the agreement, but it becomes part of the agreement.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
And kind of a follow-on to my first question. So do you feel confident that what the income from the golf course and what we're gonna have to pay CourseCo, the eighty-two-hundred dollars a month, that it will not be a burden on the taxpayers?
I do feel very comfortable moving forward with this process. I have an extremely solid belief in what they've put together. Also, obviously, through the RFP process, we've reached out to a number of different courses that are run by CourseCo, so have, they've got an amazing reputation. So I, and again, as Amy can attest to, the reports that we've seen so far are extremely detailed. And again, we're gonna work very closely as far as our expenses at the course and working through the day-to-day operations, making sure that we are doing the best we can with the funds that we have provided. Additional things that CourseCo will be bringing to the course will obviously increase those revenues. Within year one, we do not have anything in writing where we're gonna be doing a revenue share. And that's mostly because we want to get through twelve months first before we decide what that looks like. But we wanna build in some incentives for them moving forward. Also, written within there will be funds that will go into a capital account, which we haven't had at the course for about twelve years. So then we're able to put money back into the course without me having to come to you annually and request funds to make improvements. And we do feel confident enough that we will have those abilities to put those things, those pieces in place and still be able to cover our expenses.
Counselor Lidkey?
Thank you. Director Barker, so right now, we're saying we're gonna pay ninety-eight thousand four hundred for a year, correct? With the eighty-two hundred? And then, can you first, we're going to start a course operating account, because we currently do not have that, correct?
There is one that's in place now. When CourseCo came on board at day one, that account was created.
Our original contract, emergency contract, was for fifty thousand?
Yes. And that seven thousand per month was something that was coming out of that operating account at that time. We have not written a check to CourseCo at this point.
Counselor Lidkey?
Why?
Because it's, their expense is basically part of their annual, or their monthly expense list that they give us. So there, let's say that they get, like, today we received February's financials. Within February's financials, it shows what their utility costs were, what their staffing expenses were, everything that was related to course expenses that they were in charge of paying for, including that seven thousand is basically listed as an expense of the course within that monthly report that we receive. So it's not billed separately. If we hit a point where that account gets down to zero, then that's something that would be turned around, and the city would be responsible for basically breaking even.
Counselor Lidkey?
Can you do just a quick breakdown of identified capital improvements that we have on the horizon?
Well, I'll be giving a presentation to you, and may, I'd hate to give up that fabulous information. But as far as capital, I can tell you what we've done so far in the last four or five months. We've made improvements within the kitchen. There's new carpeting. We're gonna be putting insulation within the clubhouse building. We talked about electrical upgrades to the golf cart storage area. So those are all underway right now. New storage tanks for both gasoline and diesel are in place. But looking forward, and what I'll bring to you during the budget process for capital, we'll be looking at improving the driveway into the facility, signage from the road on O'Connor, which doesn't necessarily need to be a capital, but looking at bigger things like maintenance shed needs to be replaced. It's in sorry shape, and that's a city facility that we should be responsible for. Those types of things is what we're looking at. There's some improvements that we need to make to the south pond, so then we can irrigate out of that during irrigation season. So then when we're drying down from the pond at night, we can refill it during the day when the use in the city is at a lower capacity, or a lower level. So improvements such like that that have been needed, but we haven't had the funding to do that.
Counselor Forsman?
Yeah, sorry, cut out a little bit. Can you repeat?
I'm just asking if you have any questions or comments.
None at this time.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroeder?
I have a question.
Counselor Towesley?
Yeah. Give me a worst-case scenario. What happens if we don't approve this tonight?
It's a good question. We may have to step in in the interim. Because of the fee structure that's in place, we have to stay under that fifty thousand. And so that would get us through the six months. We may have to step in and operate, manage the course until we figure out what the city wants to do long-term. I wouldn't be going down this route if I don't feel like this is our best option moving forward with this agreement today.
You have people who, I'm sorry, can I?
Counselor?
Do you have people who could step in April first and run the golf course?
I do, but we don't have capacity within our own staffing levels right now to be able to manage that and other things. We would have to reduce the amount of services we provide.
Thank you.
Counselor Lidkey?
So it's set to begin April first. We do not have another meeting before that, correct? Or do we do regular meetings? And the reason why I ask is that the one big thing that I would have liked to have seen is the the last few months, to see how that break down. Thank you for that explanation, but seeing how relationship has worked. I feel like, yes, it's not during the peak, but for me, to try to look at this conservatively right now, if we were hanging their head above water, that would have helped me make a decision tonight. But not seeing any of that, it's hard to just go off of this where there's really no financial information within the a little bit of how we're going to spend some of that stuff out. So I would prefer, if maybe we could table it until next regular meeting where we could see those financials, it would make me feel better about it, because I believe that we need to keep a golf course for us to move forward and really draw on the assets of our city. It would be nice to not lose any features that take us steps back from being considered a resort and have some availability to grow in other ways. So I'm very supportive of keeping the golf course. I just wanna make sure that we are responsible. So I guess that's not really a question, but a comment.
Director?
Comment?
Fair.
I'll tell you that our two main months of revenue have been October, when past sales opened up, for, starting January one, twenty-twenty-three, through December, and then January, once people realized that they had to pay again, they were coming in. But our financials the last couple months have not been great with the weather that we've had. So it's not gonna give you a good indication of what the long-term, the long-term outlook's gonna be at the course. I mean, I'd be more than happy to provide you and share that information with you, but I don't think it's gonna give you a great idea of what potential we have.
Counselor Forsman?
Yeah, I was just kind of, kind of piggyback off of that. And then again, with this contract, there's obviously a lot in here. It's also something in here about, and maybe I'm not reading it correctly, so help me out here. But if, the event that the golf course is not doing well, or it's kind of failing, that the manager, as they said, is kind of held responsible for that on page twenty-six, note C. Well, it says twenty-six, yeah, yeah, page twenty-six.
Which, did you say B or D?
B, other than cat.
Oh, C, okay. And I can't specifically point out, but there is, there is an ability for both of us to back out if needed. But if we can invite Michael back up to make a comment.
If I could, if you can indulge me.
Please introduce yourself, accounts.
Michael Sharp, CEO and President of CourseCo. I'll just offer some perspective here. So I understand, when we came in, it was an emergency contract. It was, hey, the city was in trouble. The previous operator was leaving. We came in. They went through the RFP process. We went through that. They selected our firm. And you're right, a lot of stuff is moving pretty fast because of the previous operator, that relationship ending, however that ended, and it put the city in a tough spot. We came in, we're operating, and now we have this new contract that's up for approval tonight. I can tell you, one of the things you'll get from me is just transparency and just the reality of the situation. There are, there are some worst-case scenarios, but I don't know if they're necessarily bad. From my perspective as the operator who's gonna run the golf course, there are some safety nets in there. We, our vision and our hope, and hope is not a good word, okay, because it's not concrete, is that we have a financially sustainable model, where there's no subsidy from the general fund. And then this golf course is robust with revenue and rounds, community pride, activity, and there's no subsidy. And that's our plan. To do that in year one, based on the data that we have and based on the condition that it's in, it's gonna be very challenging and difficult. This is an endeavor that's gonna take one year, two years, three years, to build those revenues back up, to build that program calendar back up. And as we work with the city on what the actual costs are to operate the golf course and what the actual revenues will be as we work through that budgeting process, we're not gonna know that number, but there's some safeguards in the contract. If we're not doing our job, this is a three-year contract. We typically only get into contracts that are minimum five years. We believe in it. So we're doing a three-year, because we believe that we can turn the three-year into that ten-year for those one-year extensions. We believe in it. We've done this exact work in other cities, and we're betting on ourselves. There's also safeguards in here that if the city council needs protection, is that there's a hundred and eighty-day out clause. If we can't do it, our firm, CourseCo, can't pull it off, and we can't turn this around and make it, make it that vision that I, that aforementioned. There's a chance for the city to hit the eject button and cancel with a hundred and eighty-eight days' notice. And it's our duty to help transfer it back to the city, whether the employees become city employees, however that looks. So there are some safeguards that are put in there. I'm gonna stay up here just in case there's more questions, because I might be able to provide some perspective as the operator and not as the city.
Thank you, Michael. Counselor Lidkey?
I do have a question. And I appreciate that you don't wanna use any city subsidies. Does that include water?
So, so that's a sensitive subject, too. The way that I understand the water situation for the golf course, as for what I'm charged with as the manager of the golf course, there would be no subsidy. How that water, the rate and the pay and how that works, that'd be a different discussion for the department, for the director, and for city staff. As what I am charged with in our contract, I'm focused on the expense of running the golf course, the water expense that the city's gonna tell me is the expense for that golf course, and the revenues for that golf course. And the delta between the two, whether it's a positive or a negative, my job is to get that negative as small as possible to positive. And the water, I'm not dancing around the water question, but I know it's a sensitive subject. And I know that for my contract on April first moving forward, what my water bill is gonna be, what's gonna be allocated towards the golf course. Hopefully, that answers it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I just might be, a question for Tim Barker. Do we feel the, I shouldn't say feel, but do the numbers show the way that the golf course has been doing the previous years is so far behind that we are needing three years to feel like we're gonna be making this a good investment and that we're actually gonna start seeing the golf course thrive? And why, and why wasn't it thriving in the past?
Thank you, Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director. Thanks for the question, Counselor Forstman. How I can answer that is, we had a 22-year operator of the course. I would tell you that he probably wouldn't have been there for 22 years if he was losing money. We know that there's money to be made there to help offset our operating expenses. To what extent, we don't know yet at this point, but the hope long-term is that this might actually help with our general operating within our recreation department as well, within the general funded area. So we wouldn't have gone this route if we thought that we were going down a rabbit hole and we didn't think that we could operate the golf course. So there's enough information from the past that we've seen that we think there's a lot of opportunity based on what numbers we have seen and the potential to create additional revenue at the site.
You?
Counselors, if I can just throw a word in, because I've been involved in this for a little bit, I can tell you that water is a very sensitive issue, but it is my intention, working with Director Barker and Director Gordon, with Courseco, everybody out there, is to have this golf course be self-sustaining, and the sooner the better. And that includes paying full price for the water, and all the water. And so I can tell you, I'm committed to that. And I, and I think, I would just tell you that I feel confident that Courseco and Mr. Sharp are good for their word and that they're going to work very, very hard to help us get there. Now, I could be wrong, but I'll just tell you, that's what I believe tonight, is that we have a very good opportunity here tonight to move forward on this. If we have to wait a week or two, we can do that, but I think it's the right course of action to go, and my goal is to have that water paid for and resolve that issue. So I'll say that tonight, so.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd concur. The, the observation right now is, so we've had, in the past, what I would call a, maybe an inefficient operator, okay? I think we're given some, not necessarily up-to-date financial information for whatever reasons. It is what it is. We've got new operator that's come in, kind of bailed us out to keep the place open, yet people are looking at this month or next month, here, next week, what's this course going to do? We need to start looking at, what's this course going to look like in three years, or four years, or five years? I mean, it's not rocket science. I think the course is, under proper management, is a viable asset to the city.
Counselors, further discussion? Counselor Schroeder?
I make a motion.
Motion's in order.
I move to award RFP-23-005, excuse me, to Courseco, Inc., and Lewiston Golf LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and the Lewiston Golf LLC.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Kleberg, to award RFP-23-005 to Courseco Incorporated/Lewiston Golf LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Lewiston Golf LLC. Is there further discussion?
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you, Mayor. This appears to be the most transparent we've ever had with the airport, with the airport, sorry, with the golf course. And I totally appreciate it, and I think it's time that we step up and let them do their job. And I thank you, Mr. Barker, for finding them and bringing them here. So I like the transparency already, and I think they're going to continue to do that. So I'm in favor of this.
Counselor Littke?
Hi. Mr. Sharp, I appreciate your approach, and I also need to say that this is a contract that I think will hold us all accountable. And I am going to support this with the caveat that we can both walk away if this doesn't work. And I just expect that we don't dance around sensitive issues. We need to protect our assets. And I think that from what you have done in the last few months, it's been good. I have not heard of golfers being unhappy. And obviously, for the sake of just our city not losing another asset, I'm hopeful that you can be successful quicker than even you project. So I will support this at this time.
Counselor Tausley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's important that mayor who was elected on, on having a strong mayor-centered government is saying that we are going to have the city, excuse me, have the golf course pay for their own water. That's something that was pretty divisive for a while, and it caused a lot of issues. And because I know that he's sincere in that, I will support this, so.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
I just wanted to, I did go through the contract, and there's a lot in there, it's very detailed, which I appreciate. And I look forward to seeing what this golf course could become, hopefully something that all can enjoy, and maybe we'll get some more golfers, enthusiasts in the valley.
Thank you, Counselor. No further discussion. Bree?
Counselor President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Tausley?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, we have item D, ordinances. Item 1, second and third readings. Item A, sub-A, ordinance 4872, considering amendment of various sections in Chapter 37, Articles 1 and 3 of the Lewiston City Code to change the name of the zoning code, amend definitions, and amend regulations pertaining to planned unit developments, repealing Section 37-95, titled designation and reserving such section, repealing and replacing Section 37-97 regarding administrative procedures for planned unit developments, amending Section 37-115 regarding contracts running agreements. This is an action item. Counselors, with that, the item is before you. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4872.
Second?
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Tausley, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4872. Is there discussion or further motions?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Substitute motions in order.
I would like to move to approve. Resolution, sorry, I forgot my language up here. I would like to move to combine the, amend ordinance number 4872 to return Section 5, letter C, back to the original language, which was previously, letter E, that's been struck. I believe that that is a clear path forward so that developers would be able to fully understand how they need to move forward by simply citing.
Second?
Okay, Counselors, we have a, we have a substitute motion before us, and I hope, Clerk Rabin croft, you can hear us clear enough, but the substitute motion is to amend ordinance number 4872 by deleting the language in Section 5, subsection C, roadways, and instead reinserting Section 5, subsection E, on private roadways. Is that clear enough, Bree?
I think so, yes, Your Honor, or Mayor.
I don't hear well. You can say whatever you want about me.
Let's go for it.
So Counselors, I'm just going to read this to you, Counselor Forstman, too. The language that is being removed in this motion states, "Private roadways per end is defined in Chapter 32 of this code, and per end may be permitted within the project if their maintenance is provided for as acceptable to the Public Works Director. They are designed and installed to specifications acceptable to the city engineer, and they are approved by the city council." That language would be removed, and instead, we would revert back to subsection E, and everything would be renumbered and here relettered. And that would state instead, "Private roadway shall be permitted within the project provided they are approved by the city council and are installed to city specifications for similar public streets." Is there discussion?
Counselor Schroeder?
May we have Ms. Hollins's head come up and explain why?
We may do that. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Ms. Hollins, please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Katie Hollins, Assistant Planner, and actually, I'm going to defer to Dustin Johnson with Public Works, because that particular portion of our code was proposed by Public Works because that comes out of the code, and we wanted to make the planned unit development code and the subdivision code match up more succinctly.
Okay, so what has been changed was, is what Director Johnson believes to be the right thing to do?
Correct.
Because it unites the two things. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. And maybe your opinion as well, if we can hear that.
Public Works Director Dustin Johnson, yeah, I don't, I, we made those amendments because we thought they were a little bit more clear, provided a little bit more direction to developers. I mean, honestly, I, this is, we spoke about it at the first reading, which was a couple of weeks ago. I haven't heard anything since then, so I have, I don't, I have nothing to speak to tonight.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Littke?
So, sorry, Director Johnson, Katie referenced that this matches language within your code. Do you happen to know what she's referencing?
No.
And if I could just speak to my substitute.
Counselor Littke?
I, I just, I feel like we get to the end result. With both languages, however, we open ourselves up to subjectivity because of multiple city engineers that could possibly be involved. And without it written on paper with clear and concise, this is the city's specifications, if a person has to go through a individual, and this person goes through on this week, and this, another developer, or the same developer goes through another city engineer, I think we open ourselves up for issue. I believe that code should be simple and to the point, and the language that says they are installed to city specifications, to me, gets us to the same end game, doesn't take away involvement from the city. It simply says to a developer, here's your specifications, and of any subjectivity that could land us in delays in development, possible litigation, all the things that can happen when you write code and/or law with subjectivity. And so I, I just feel like this doesn't harm the change. It simply makes sure that we're, we aren't opening ourselves up to issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you're talking about subjectivity, "Private roadways shall be permitted within the project provided they are approved by the city council," so there's that, "and are installed to city specifications for similar public streets." Well, that's pretty subjective. Ask me, somebody put a subdivision right across the street from my house, and you know what? I live on Vista Avenue, the 400 block, it's a 20-foot right-of-way. It's a similar public street. They've got curb gutters and sidewalks. I don't. I mean, that's pretty subjective there. I think this spells it out, the new one, per end C, private roadways. I mean, that's pretty specific.
By me, Mayor, I mean, I, I remember, I've slept a couple of times since we had the first reading, and so I'm jogging my mind as we're trying to catch up on the conversation here, that generally, the subjectivity, I don't disagree with the comment, is generally, it's typically developer is going to bring their own engineer to design the roads, and then you're going to have, who is going to be a licensed engineer, and licensed engineers with the city who review it. The subjectivity usually falls within the line of the topography or the existing state of the, of the development will struggle with the standards that are outlined in our standards. So would this professional engineer propose this to be reviewed by these professional engineers? Yeah, I think that's probably the best scenario that we can make it work in these scenarios. And then we can take it to the council and say, we've worked it out, here's what we recommend. There's always going to be disagreements. Maybe a developer says, I think we can get it to fit with 20 feet, and this, we want 24, and it would end up in your, in your, in your purview. I think the way we rewrote it was in that, let us do that kind of subjectivity in the back, in the front end, instead of waiting till the back end and then have it to the council. It, I think it would be a little, give them, give the developers a little bit more certainty as they go through the process. There's, development is a challenge. There's always going to be some, some subjectivity in the process because developers, by nature, are going to want, they obviously want to make money off the process. And so if there's certain demands by the standards, whether they're defined by specific code or they're subject to engineers' desires, if they can't make it pencil, they can't make it pencil. I think the way we drafted the code was to try and make it so you don't dump a lot of money into a project by designing it all the way to the end to get it to the council and say, yeah, the council disagrees with the developer, and so you're, we're not going to support that. You would kind of work in the beginning. So I think that's why, it is, it is subjectivity, but I think it was purposely drafted so it would give the developers certainty through the process.
Counselor Littke?
Thank you, Director. And I, it's not that, again, I, my words are really, truly to protect the city from future litigation and people not wanting to build here, bottom line. And so, again, it's not necessarily the subjectivity that's given to you or even to your city engineer, but they may be permitted within the project if their maintenance is provided for. Brings me to another issue. They're not maintained until they're built, right? Or is that language in reference to something else? So it reads, "Private roadways, as defined in Chapter 32 of this code, may be permitted within the project if their maintenance is provided for, as acceptable to the Public Works Director. They are designed and installed to specifications acceptable to the city manager and approved by the city council." There's a lot of, but maybe I just need a lesson.
So private roads are not maintained by, by the city. So that, in the process, if we allow them to be built with a development, we want them, we've agreed with the developer that the city is not going to maintain these roads. These are yours to maintain for whatever reason. And so the least we can ask is, it meets this, because it's going to need to meet, you know, emergency services, it's going to need to meet, you know, can we get a water line down there, those, those types of things. So it has, it may not meet city-defined standards, and most typically, they are topography, where they're just, we can't get the full right-of-way in there, and so we're going to work with the And so, we're gonna work with the developer, and knowing that because it is not, does not meet the city standards, we will not accept ownership of those roads. Those will be privately maintained with public access. He's been on top of them. And the history of private streets, and it doesn't matter if you're in Lewiston, Clarkston, Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, or Moscow, the, the history of, of development, developers, as I said, there's good developers, there's bad developers. Developers will come in and say, "I'm gonna build this private street. It's gonna be super narrow. There's not gonna be parking," and the city says, "Okay, that's yours." And then, within ten, twenty, thirty years, the, the residents of that street say, "I don't, nobody plows my street. Nobody main, nobody's chip sealed. Nobody's done the sidewalk. Nobody's done anything here." They come to the city, and the city says, "Sorry, it's, it's too narrow," or "This was, this was done by the, by the owner, by the developer," and that developer has, has long gone. So, there, that's why city staff tries to work with the developer to get as much out of that private street as we can to meet the minimum standards, knowing someday the residents may petition the city to take that street back over or take that new street over.
Counselors, if there's no further discussion, then I am going to ask you to vote on the substitute motion. And again, as to go back to the original language for private roads. Is there any questions on the motion? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Thank you, councilors. We'll go back to the original motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-two. Those in favor, will, is there discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
May I do the follow-up motion?
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-two.
Second, it's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-two. Is there discussion? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Counselors?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight seventy-two. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending various sections in Chapter Thirty-seven, Articles One and Three of the Lewiston City Code to change the name of the zoning code, amend definitions, and amend regulations pertaining to planned unit developments. Repealing Section Thirty-seven dash ninety-five's title designation and reserving such section. Repealing and replacing Section Thirty-seven dash ninety-seven regarding administrative procedures for planned unit developments. Amending Section Thirty-seven dash one fifteen regarding contract zoning agreements and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Ravencroft. Counselors, next up, we have Item B under Subsection One of Section D ordinances, Ordinance Forty-eight Seventy-Five, amending Section Thirty-six point five dash five, Sublet C of Lewiston City Code related to water use for irrigation purposes at a municipal golf course. This is an action item. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading full of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-five.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-five. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-five.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Towesley, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-five. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third reading, pardon me. Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight seventy-five. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Section Thirty-six dash five point five per n C of the Lewiston City Code related to water used for irrigation purposes at the municipal golf course and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Ravencroft. Counselors, we have Item C next, ordinance forty-eight seventy-six, amending Section Two dash forty-two of the Lewiston City Code related to the Compensation Review Committee. This is an action item. Mayor? Counselor Towesley?
I'd like to make the motion to combine second and third readings and waive the third reading.
Second.
Ordinance number forty-eight seventy-six.
Second.
It's been moved to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-six. I did add the word "full" to that, counselor. Do you agree with that? Just wanna make sure, because we have people recording this. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Counselor Towesley?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight seventy-six.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Towesley, second by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-six. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight seventy-six. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Section Two dash forty-two of the Lewiston City Code related to the Compensation Review Committee and providing an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. Okay, councilors, next up, we have Item Two under Section D, Adoption and Approval of Ordinance Sumories. And I would entertain one motion.
I would take, make that motion to adopt ordinances number forty-eight seventy-two, forty-eight seventy-five, and forty-eight seventy-six, and approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt, moved by Counselor Towesley, second by Counselor Schroeder, to adopt ordinances number forty-eight seventy-two, forty-eight seventy-five, and forty-eight seventy-six, and approve the related ordinance summaries. Is there discussion? Bree?
Counselor President Littkey? Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spiegelmeier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors.
Mayor, this is city clerk, this is city clerk Ravencroft. I apologize, but I did not hear Counselor President Littkey's vote.
Counselor Littkey?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Ravencroft. It's important that we know that. Counselors, next up, we move to Roman numeral seven. And this item, vouchers payable, was moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Littkey?
I have actually several line items that I'd like explained, and I apologize. I thought I hit send on Friday. So, there's two vouchers payable included in this packet, correct? So, I'm gonna try to reference by page number. So, on the first voucher, page one, Advanced Contracting, City Hallways for four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars, and I believe it had a reference to painting that, a project that's already completed.
That's, that's correct.
Director Gordon, please introduce yourself for the record.
President Littkey, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer, that's correct. That project has been completed, and that was for painting the hallways at City Hall.
And then, same page, High Reservoir, Admiral beverage, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. I believe there's a reference to water, and that was the water that we were sharing with city residents during the oil order, correct?
That's correct. That was the bottled water that was made available for residents to pick up at the community center.
And then, same page, Banner Bank Finance, U.B. and Purchasing Flat Panel Heaters. And I'm assuming that's utility billing and purchasing. Is that just space heaters?
Correct.
So, fire code.
Yeah, well, actually, we had an update to our facility, our facility supervisor. Space heaters that we had were not up to her requirements, so those went into surplus, and then these are replacing heaters.
And then, page five on that same vouchers payable, David Evans and Associates, reference to Capital Project, Brighton Avenue, for sixty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, seventy-seven cents. Can you just give us a brief what that were exactly?
That one, I will defer to Director Johnson.
Yep, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, so that is, yeah, design for Brighton Reconstruction. That's sixty-six thousand, so we get reimbursed for that. So, that is S.D.P. fund, so the U.R.A. is paying the match, and then the federal funds are paying for that design. So, we, we pay it, then we get reimbursed.
I'll just stop there. The next one's for you, too, more than likely. And then, there's a reference to same page, page, I don't know, excuse me, one page down, page six, Idaho Transportation Department, I'm assuming, is all abbreviated. It's a reference to a double payment for fifty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and five cents. Can you just, do you know what that double payment was for, and?
We submitted a reimbursement request in air twice, and so that was just reimbursing them for that duplicate payment.
Just follow up. What are they giving us money for?
Uh, let's see here. Do you know what that project number is for? We can follow up with you on that.
Oh, yeah, that's, again, I wanna make sure we're understanding some of these payments and where we are with projects.
Yeah, I would have to follow up with you tomorrow on what specific project that was for.
Then, again, on page six, up higher, 'cause I thought Director Johnson would take that one, is Icon Corporation, and I'll just read two references, 'cause there's also a Celtic. But in reference to community center roof for fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, is that our final payment? And then, there's a Celtic engineering reference to the same community center roof on page eight for eighteen hundred and sixty-five dollars. I'm just wondering, are we closing in, and I, I honestly thought we were done paying, so is there any? Did I miss a payment, or are we?
I think it's likely our last payment, but I can't say that for certain. It is, you know, the end of that project that was, there were no change orders to that contract, so that is a payment on the original P.O. with no change orders to it. The project's done, so it's likely to be the final payment, but without having that purchase order in front of me, I don't, I don't know for certain.
Again, I'm.
And then, the Celtic engineering, my apologies, that is, Celtic engineering serves as the engineering and project management on the roof job, which is standard for us to use an engineer for our roofs.
Same, back to Icon Corp., City Hall Roof Drain for nineteen thousand five hundred.
So, that was to do a repair on the City Hall roof on the west side, above the large conference room there that was leaking into the, leaking down. They came in and repaired that.
We budgeted for that, or was that something that happened that we needed to?
I don't think it was planned, but it came out of the facility's budget.
And just a couple more. So, on the second one, second vouchers, page four of twenty, page four, Banner Bank, and I'm guessing this is transportation, T.R.N., S.P.N., and it's in reference to in-person twelve-week leadership development program for twenty-one hundred dollars, eight, twenty-one hundred, eight dollars, eighty-eight cents. What that, if you know what that is?
I thought that was on page four, oh, right here.
Or on the second set of vouchers.
Middle.
Page fifty-six overall.
Oh. Our page numbers are not jiving there, sorry. Give the amount.
Um, yeah, it was twenty, twenty-one hundred, two thousand one hundred and eight dollars, eighty-eight cents. It was through Banner Bank.
We can follow up with you on that. I mean, we have, I'm not sure there's ongoing staff training that, I think, but that one hasn't occurred yet, so the one I'm thinking of, but I will follow, I can follow up and figure out which one that is.
And then, last one, 'cause all the other ones got answered in earlier emails. But on page seventeen of the second vouchers, it's Sherman Williams, Oregon Transportation, for seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And I'm just wondering if that's for a specific project or just maintenance for, clearly, road paint?
Yeah, I don't recognize that coding. We can follow up on that one, too. We did buy paint recently, so that probably is what that is, but.
And I did try to get those questions out, but with the vouchers payable being of such a large amount, I wanted to make sure I was, that's all I had.
Thank you, councilors. Further questions, councilors?
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Mayor? Hi, I have just one question of police lodging for Anderson Airbnb for five hundred and eighty on page four.
Was that page four of the first or second list? Page four of thirteen or twenty?
Second one. So, the dates are for February.
So, that would be lodging. So that would be lodging that was paid during a training attended by one of our police officers?
Oh, okay, to a, to a community or agency, if that's my understanding.
I don't have any more details on what's on the list, but I can get some additional information on that and send it out to you.
Counselors, is there further discussion?
Ed?
Counselor Littke?
Make a motion to approve vouchers payable, both, both sets.
And moved by Counselor Littke and second by Counselor Schroder to approve vouchers payable. Is there further discussion? Bree?
Counsel, Counsel President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, counselors. Motion passes. Next, we move to Roman numeral 8, unfinished and new business. Item A, city council comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors?
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I will be flying home on Wednesday. As I've been here, my sister-in-law has been in the hospital for most of the time, got to see her for a couple days, and then she came down with a really bad cold, but for someone struggling with cancer means that she no longer could do her cancer until, her cancer treatments until they did better. So I just appreciate the citizens' hopeful understanding of me taking the time with my family and being here for my nieces and nephews and helping them get to school and helping my brother when needed. And she is coming home, she's finally feeling a little bit better, but she's still not out of the woods, and her survival rate is like a 65%. So it's kind of scary. So I just appreciate again that this time that I was able to be here for my family, and I look forward to being in-person meetings on the next coming meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up, Item B, city boards and commission lays on updates. Counselor Schroder, would you like to tell the rest of the council your wishes on that?
Oh, I, thank you. I'm sorry that I did not think about this in January when we're supposed to make a change, but I would like to be removed from the Historic Preservation Commission. I have spent more than a, well, a year with them, but I, off and on, it's been a lot of years that I've worked with the Historic Preservation Commission on the things they were doing through PNC and other things that I've worked on. So I have a good basis for what they do, and I appreciate them greatly, but I think it is every counselor's duty as well as right to go out and seek these commissions that are supporting our city and get to know them, and I would like to provide that opportunity for someone else to do that, as I had been waiting for three years for the Public Works Commission to come alive, and we have citizens at large that have come forward, so we can now do that. And I was waiting for that opportunity, and I think I, I am very excited about that. So I am willing to remove myself from Historic Preservation Commission so that someone else can take a turn at learning what they do, and it is a great opportunity, and I hope everyone steps up to it. Well, not everyone, but people that haven't understood what they do.
Thank you, Counselor. And counselors, if this is something you may be interested in or available, would you please let City Clerk Ravencroft or Deputy City Clerk Brockie know of your interest, and we'll try to get that commission filled. It is important that we have representation on there and listen to those who are serving us in a voluntary capacity and then to be able to report back to us. So thank you, Counselor Schroder. Any other updates? Next item, mayor's comments. First of all, I'd like to announce that the Urban Renewal Agency will not be meeting tomorrow, and that meeting will be rescheduled, it hasn't been determined yet when, but they will not be meeting tomorrow, if you're listening live. Judge Bradbury has left. I was going to thank him for attending tonight, a former city councillor here who cares very deeply about some of these issues that we're dealing with. I just appreciate his involvement and invite him to continue to work with us as we try to make the city a better community. Item D, advisory board and commission appointments. Number 1, Public Works Advisory Commission, considering the appointment of Ryan Rader for a two-year term, I move to appoint Ryan Rader to the Public Works Advisory Commission for a two-year term.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Littke to appoint Ryan Rader to the Public Works Advisory Commission for a two-year term. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda topics, counselors. Ebony tonight? Anything? Okay, moves us to Roman numeral number 9, adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
I move to.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Kleberg to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?